Council President Protem Zappone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle, are you online? Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Bingle are absent.
All right, we're going to start off with interviews of nominees to boards and commissions. We have one who has applied for the CHHS board, and that is Anna Stahl. I believe, Anna, are you online or on the call? Don't believe she's here. So if she comes back, we will, or if she gets online, we'll come back to her. So we'll go ahead and turn over today's agenda. So we're going to brief today, August 12th, and then we'll brief next week's, August 19th, after that. So Mr. Piccolo, if you want to start on today's?
Yes, thank you. So for the August 12th, on the consent agenda, the first two items will be addressed by Jason Nikanski, and they both deal with Pomp Tire Services of Spokane.
Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Piccolo, Jason Nikanski, Director of Purchasing and Contracts, requesting your approval for both items, one and two, related for a value blanket for tires, and the second one is a master service contract for tire-related services. And this is for various departments to take care of their vehicle fleet needs for tires. Any questions? Thank you.
Number three is a contract amendment with Allied Industrial Technologies, and David Payne.
Yes, good afternoon, Council President, Council members. This contract is to add money to an existing contract. The additional amount is $150,000 for Applied Industrial Technologies for parts and services related to our ash conveying system. This contract runs from July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2025. That'll make the total amount of the contract $360,000 plus tax. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Number four is a master personal service agreement with Absolute Drug Testing, and Michael Diamond will address this one. Don't see him on the screen or in the room, so we will follow up with him and have him get back with the city council. This is on for action for tonight, so it should have been briefed last, at your prior meeting. If you have any questions, I can reach out to Michael. Number five is a joint application with Empire Health Foundation, and Ariel Anderson will brief this item.
Good afternoon, thank you. I do have a PowerPoint that was submitted. I don't know, Jacoby, if you've got that. So one of the requests was to have more, excuse me, have more of a presentation generally of the navigation site model. So we're hoping that some of this might answer some initial questions, and then I'm happy to field any other questions that you all may have.
Ariel, I don't see it in the appropriate folder here. You emailed me last week. Can I use that one?
Yes, yes. You can just move on to the second one straight away. Thank you.
And you can use the clicker there to advance the slides. It's the down arrow.
Is it this one? Yes, okay. Okay, great. So first slide here just kind of goes over what the general recommendations were from that shelter assessment that was conducted a couple of months ago. And, you know, I think one of the things that came out of that was having scattered, kind of smaller scattered site shelters. But more than that also, that were more sub-population specific and then needs specific, right? So not everybody should be, or can be fit into a one-size-fits-all shelter model. And then through those scattered site shelters, being able to work directly with, you know, maybe a group home referral, long-term care, potentially hospice, which happens quite often, particularly with chronically homeless folks, and detox, sobering, et cetera. You can go on to the, I can go on to the next one. Never mind. So, going backwards here. Next one, navigation center. So really kind of what we envision is, so onsite coordination, 24/7 staff, being able to, you know, if needed during the day, to go above that 30-bed option when needed, and again, being able to address all the various populations that may be presenting, and then being able to make effective referrals to either scattered site, as I mentioned before, scattered site shelters, or any other needs or resources that an individual may have. In addition, onsite, you know, you would be assisting with photo ID, social security cards, you know, getting folks document ready in order to take that next step to permanent housing, or transitional, or emergency shelter, whatever the case is, whatever they may require. Limited overnight stays, so, you know, we're hoping for 30 to 45 days. Now, I suspect that, you know, when this first opens, at that time, it's going to be extended just by virtue of it being a brand-new model that we're standing up. But that is the ultimate, you know, hope, is to get to that point. I don't know why I keep going in the opposite direction. So here, just very briefly, kind of going over the navigation operator, I'm not going to repeat everything that you're seeing here in the slides, but one of the benefits, I think, of working with an operator is that they are able to pay any of those scattered site model providers, and won't necessarily have to be, those smaller providers won't have to wait for that 30 days that the city typically takes, you know, to get money out the door. So we're saving time there. In addition, it's just one contract that CHHS is having to monitor as opposed to several, so that reduces staff time as well. And the other thing that I think was unique about this RFP is that we did require kind of a ready-made partnership as opposed to kind of forcing that or thrusting that between the operator and the service provider. So those two, you know, we did just get one response, but EHF and Revive have a longstanding relationship, they know one another, and so I think being able to effectively get this up and running very quickly is going to, you know, not going to take a lot of time. We're going to be focusing on stabilization services, placement, and longer-term housing, again, within that 30- to 45-day mark. So the model, we hope, to be working towards a five-day scatter site shelters. Of course, if we get more than that, great. 20 to 30-person capacity, again, accounting for those population needs, a mix of 24/7, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM operations, and that those referrals must be coming through that navigation center. And so it's going to be really important for that operator to be cultivating, you know, those relationships with a myriad of different providers throughout the community, which I believe EHF has effectively, you know, stated throughout their application, as well as Revive. Expectations, low barrier with program rules and accountability. So again, just because something is low barrier does not mean that there are not rules and expectations of folks. We will require CMIS data entry and performance monitoring, and then focus on housing and other, again, long-term state placement. Here's the general timeline that we worked with, and I do want to acknowledge that, you know, we did this very quickly. Unfortunately, sometimes that, just the way that the funding comes down and is made available locally, we have no choice but to act pretty quickly. So we did hear that, you know, it was a short timeframe for providers, but unfortunately, we needed to get this out into the community quickly. Questions?
Long questions. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I guess originally pitched, there were going to be, I think, more than eight, and they're going to be limited to 20. Now we're looking at up to 30, which is a pretty big increase, considering these will be in our neighborhoods. And then to hear your comment, you know, if there's more, great. Well, I think our neighborhoods are going to be concerned about just the impacts from the 30, let alone any additional. And so what are the specific plans in place right now for good neighbor agreements, and how are we going to uphold those?
Yeah, so I'll address the first part of that question. So when I'm saying that hopefully there's more, hopefully there's more than just eight scatter sites throughout the city of Spokane, which I think the city is large enough to accommodate that, particularly in neighborhoods that already have existing group homes. I mean, these types of facilities already exist within neighborhoods, are baked into our neighborhoods already. In terms of the, can you please repeat the second part of that?
Well, good neighbor agreements. I mean, we have, you know, struggled for a few years now to make these a mandatory aspect of these type of high-impact facilities going in place, regardless of where they are. And we need to have, I think, a contract between them, the neighbors, and the city, which is the most important part, saying that, yes, we will show up, and we will do the job that you expect of us, and we will do it in a very timely manner.
Yes.
And that needs to be in a contract with accountability attached.
Yep. And so I don't, yes, to all of that. And I want to say that there was language that we had baked into the RFP that acknowledged that, but the importance of that cultivation, that relationship with neighborhood councils in particular. And so, yes, we are ready for that. I think there's precedent for that, so we're not having to reinvent, you know, any of the documentation. And so that is the very thing that neighborhood councils are there for, is for that communication. So, yes.
One more. In terms of the process of identifying those five to eight or more sites, what will that process look like? And specifically, are we doing everything in our power to abide by our comprehensive plan that specifically says these types of facilities are to be in all 29 neighborhoods, not concentrated in a couple?
So, second part of that is, yes. I mean, I, you know, that will definitely be at the forefront for CHHS. And, do you want to, can you please?
Just what's the process look like? Do we have some sites right now that we're looking at visiting? What does that look like?
No. So, you know, I think this is part of that process. You know, we are, you know, we're excited for city council to, you know, to move this forward. You know, part of this is that contract negotiation, right, which we have, where we've had prelim conversations with EHF, nothing extensive, because there is, you know, we have to be given the okay to actually enter into contract negotiations. So that will be part of it. In terms of keeping a continuous feedback loop, which I am now remembering in that RFP, I did call that out, where having that communication with city council, with neighborhood councils, community assembly, et cetera, that will be part of it, right? So keeping all the relevant parties apprised of what that looks like. That's the benefit, I think, though, too, of working with an operator, is that that is up to them to cultivate and find those scattered sites, which could include churches, it could include, you know, warming centers that maybe are already up, or have been up in the past. I mean, who knows? We don't know. But I will say that, again, that's just one of the benefits of working with an operator, is that we're not doing that. CHHS is not going to be actively doing that.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, just thank you, you know, to you and your team, I think, for all the work that's gone into this, and it's pretty amazing to see it come from a conceptual discussion here at the beginning of the year. Some of that, I know, predated you coming onboard, but you've been an amazing driver in making this happen. And I think we did see a lot of successes with the scatter site model, and I mentioned this before, I mean, I live just a block from one place that was a location, and folks went door-to-door, you know, they canvassed the neighborhood, talked with neighbors, and there really was a minimal impact. And I think that, you know, we just have to keep returning back to the good that this is going to do, and this does represent, I think, a significant shift from past years in strategies, and I'm confident we'll see good outcomes.
I want to thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to go back to number four for a minute, and we have Michael Diamond on the screen now, I believe.
Oh, good afternoon, council members. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience, as I just returned back to the office from another meeting. Before you today for approval is a new drug and alcohol testing contract with Absolute Drug Testing. The city has been with Absolute Drug Testing since 2018. We have been under an extension with them, which ended on June 30th of '24, and this contract, which is hopeful for another five years, beginning with a one-year term, and one-to-two-year incremental extensions, would hopefully backdate to July 1st, with a total cost allotment of $250,000 maximum, and the funds primarily for these services. We have $50,000 that has been granted by council through general fund for community justice services to pay for testing, and the remainder of the testing would come from grants through the Washington State AOC.
Thank you. Number six will be briefed by Matt Boston, is a service agreement with Gartner, Inc., for consulting services with the finance leadership.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So this is a one-year contract to be entered with Gartner Financial Services, primarily focused on our integration and our move forward, path forward, towards a new ERP system, and the work that needs to be done there, as well as getting ourselves a little bit better of a financial footing, and then also kind of the pre-strategy that we need to get towards more artificial intelligence utilization. Happy to answer any questions, yeah.
What's an ERP system?
Enterprise resource, it's, okay.
You could just tell us what it is.
Thank you, yes. It's, I mean, essentially, it's making sure all of your different systems are working together as one. Is that the best way you would provide it, Les? Yeah, all right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Number seven, Mike Sloan will brief these two five-year contracts for the mail center.
I'm going to take, thank you, council. I'm going to take a little jab at having the CFO speak for IT. But thank you, Mr. Boston. The two contracts in front of you, 611 and 612, the first one is for Canon Solutions. This is for the mail center. Mail center does a lot of work, primarily producing the utility billing and statements for several departments that get sent out. We're end-of-life, the current hardware we have, and it's been used extensively, so it's time to replace it. The team that has worked on this effort was able to achieve an amazing result. As you can see, for the Canon solution, the first contract is for $147,720 plus tax, that's a five-year contract. What's key to this is that the annual amount is only a few dollars more than what we are previously paying for older technology. So kudos to the team, they did an excellent job in negotiating, and they found a very viable product for us to use. And the second item, 612, is the leasing of mail-in server machines. This is the machine that really does the work of stuffing all the bills and whatnot into the envelopes. And again, the team did a very, very good job in researching the right product and negotiating price, and it's just, you know, $1,000 more than what we're paying now for the old equipment. So again, kudos. And then if I may, this is my last city council briefing session. If you approve the appointment that Mayor Brown is making for Laz Martinez to be the IT director, officially, this will be my last one. So thank you. I appreciate the ability and the honor it deserves, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number eight is a contract amendment and extension with GSI Water Solutions, and Nate Soya will brief this one.
Good afternoon. This is a contract amendment and extension with GSI Water Solutions for the well-electric new well study. The extension will go through the end of 2025, and the amended amount will be $132,900. Are there any questions?
Number nine is a reimbursement agreement with STA, and Catherine Miller. Anyone here for Catherine? Marlene? We have a winner.
Good afternoon, city council. This is the agreement that we are entering into with Spokane Transit Authority to allow for additional support from us as they move through their Bus Rapid Transit project. This is payments to us for Catherine's time to make sure that we're integrated with them and make sure that this happens timely.
Thank you. Number 10 is a preventative maintenance agreement with ACI Northwest, and Kyle Arrington will brief this item.
Good afternoon, city council. This is a request to approve a three-year contract with two optional years to extend for HVAC services to the wastewater treatment plant. Total cost $360,000 for the total five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11 was a placeholder for the report of the mayors with the numbers filled in for A through E. And number 12 is a placeholder for the city council meeting minutes for July 8th, 15th, and 22nd.
Great, and we're going to go back to interviews for boards and commissions, and I believe just walked in, was, or a little bit ago now, is Anna Stahl for the CHHS board. If you could just come down, introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about your background and why you're interested in serving in this board.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Anna Stahl, and I am currently finishing up my master's at the Urban and Regional Planning Program at Eastern. I am defending my thesis on Wednesday, and I think housing is kind of the foundation of any community, and in Spokane, we've got a lot of challenges right now, and I think this board would be a great opportunity for me to participate in my community, and, yeah, that's why I'm here.
Any questions from council?
Good luck on your thesis.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming down and taking time to be interested in this. You don't have to come to the meeting tonight when we consider it for a vote, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to the legislative agenda, we have no special budget ordinances and no emergency ordinances. On the resolutions, 2024-73 is relating to the modification of the city's retail water service area, and again, Marlene Feist.
Thank you, Mike. So we just talked about this at our July PICE meeting, it feels like a long time ago, since we had that discussion, but this action would simply true-up our retail water service area with the UGA boundaries that are within that retail water service area. It's really about operational and administrative efficiency, and also providing predictability to people in our community who are looking to develop in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-74, expecting support for the federal administration new executive directive, and Andres, oh, there you are.
Hello, council. I want to apologize for the late circulation of the amendment. I thought we had until next week, but it turns out that when you skip a legislative session, then you brief the resolution and then vote on it that same night. I didn't know that, I should have been clearer on that, but I circulated an amendment to this resolution that tries to address the concerns brought up by councilmember Cathcart and Bingle about, you know, being more specific about the policy that we're endorsing, as well as the type of support and the type of organizations that we'd be giving. So we changed the language from "support the efforts of local organizations" to "local non-political, nonprofit organizations." And then we changed it from, you know, "support the new policy" or "the new federal directive" to "the expansion of the parole-in-place policy," which is the actual name of the policy that has been expanded to include not only non-citizen spouses of military personnel, but not, it's been expanded to include non-U.S. citizen spouses of just any U.S. citizen, if that makes sense. I was kind of jumbled, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Navarrete?
So motion to suspend the rules and adopt the oral amendment that Andres circulated earlier?
Second.
So there's a motion to suspend the rules, and then we'll do a motion to adopt it. All of those in favor of suspending the rules? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. That is four to one, the motion fails. It needs to have five. So we cannot do that, but potentially could be considered later.
Resolutions 75 and 76, so the appointments for Christine Sisler as retirement director, and Laz Martinez as IT director, and Adam McDaniel, who I believe is online, will address these two.
Yes, council members, I apologize for not being there in person. We're excited to bring forward these two current employees to their permanent roles. Christine Sisler, who's currently serving as our interim retirement director, and the mayor would like to appoint Christine as the permanent retirement director. And our second appointment for consideration is Laz Martinez. And we are very grateful for Mike Sloan's long service to the city, and we think Laz will be a great successor to Mike in serving as director of information technology. Have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Resolution 77, acknowledging the recommendation of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee for the West Quadrant Tax Increment Financing, and Kevin Freybot will address this one.
Good afternoon, city council. This is the item that I briefed for you last month regarding $190,000 of TIF funding for the native project. Nothing has changed since then, so I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'll see you tonight. Thank you.
Now onto the ordinances. First one is ordinance 36120, vacating property on Adam Street, and Eldon Brown will address this one. And Eldon, while you're up here, if you also want to address 36550, mending the ordinance relating to 13th Avenue.
Sure. Good afternoon. Again, we're probably looking for a deferral for two weeks on that Adam Street vacation. The attorneys are still trying to work out the details. I talked to everybody this morning about it. I did try to push everybody to say, you know, we need to bring need to bring it to a conclusion. So we're looking for August 26th at this point in time, but I really want to see if we can get that, a decision made on that date, and no more deferrals to it. Anyway, that's where we're at right now. So looking for a two-week deferrals till August 26th for the final reading.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to defer to August 26th.
Second.
All right. The motion is to defer until August 26th. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes.
Cross our fingers.
Ordinance C36550, that's the final reading of an amending ordinance. And basically, what this is, is we have on the pro site out there at about 14th and C Street, right off the freeway on the south side, we had a street vacation on Evergreen out there back in 1981, and we retained easements when we vacated Evergreen for public and private utilities. We've reached out to everybody in that regard at this point in time, and nobody needs any, no longer any easements. So we're just in here to release easements from that original ordinance. So we're here to do a final reading of this ordinance to release the original easements and not have any on that Evergreen site any longer. So be happy to answer any questions about that one.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks.
Ordinance 36548 will be considered under hearing item H1. Ordinance 36549 relating to the human rights and basic dignity of individuals experiencing homelessness. I believe that is sponsored by councilmember Navarrete.
Andres is going to brief it.
Yeah, so this is the ordinance related to the human rights and dignities of individuals experiencing homelessness. We briefed this a couple times. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions or what else I could add to this conversation.
Cool. Thank you. And then ordinance is 36552 will be handled under H, hearing item H3A, and then ordinance 36553 will be handled under H3B. And then the next three, 36554, 555, and 556, again, will be addressed under H3C, D, and E respectively. On the first reading ordinances, we have three, ordinance 36543, designating the Lunar New Year's, Martin Luther King Day, and Juneteenth as official city holidays, and sponsored by councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would actually make a motion to defer consideration as we do some additional analysis on the finance side to September 16th, which I believe is the second Monday? Third Monday?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to defer to September 16th. All of those in favor, yes? Or aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? All right, that is deferred to September 16th.
Then ordinance 36544 prohibiting illegal encampments near facilities, offering comprehensive support services, and amending section title 12. Also, councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just real quick, this has been briefed before, but it just modifies some of the definitions regarding camping, changing it from essentially congregate shelters to comprehensive support services, which would include congregate shelters, as well as other specific types of facilities that's related to homelessness. And then it also just removes the restriction on enforcing the viaducts outside of downtown. So very, very modest, very small tweak, but especially in light of some of the things that are happening right now, particularly in my district, in Chief Gary, where we have a number of issues and have for some time. And now we find out that, you know, CAT located at Second and Division is relocating into my district and in that neighborhood. And right now, there would be no ability to enforce our camping laws. And so the people of my district deserve to live in a safe neighborhood. They deserve to live in safe places. And that is why it's really important that we thoughtfully make these changes and do it now while we still can before the impacts occur.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, just, I guess, one just thing with CAT moving is that, you know, they've transitioned out of a shelter. It's 16 treatment beds. So I think we do, and, you know, we tried to find a location as well in District 2, and there were some challenges, but it's not a shelter. It's a treatment facility. So I think we do have to ask ourselves, what do we want? Where do we want it? This is a very different model than what's been under operation at Second and Division. But I guess my question is, with Prop 1, and, you know, you mentioned kind of some of the underpasses outside of the downtown core, but we have Prop 1, we have pedestrian interference. So how are those, how are those kind of untangled from this ordinance? Like where, because to me, it seems like those already would address, particularly with pedestrian interference and the example of the train trestles, that that would address some of the perhaps safety concerns?
Well, it doesn't appear to me that that has helped in other parts of our city that have experienced these sorts of impacts. And so, no, we need to simply be very clear that, no, you are not allowed to camp in these sorts of locations. That is not acceptable behavior. It's not acceptable to our neighborhoods. The people who live there reside there, they deserve better. And I will just say, especially in District 1, boy, oh, boy, we have had plenty of impacts over the years. And so we really need to make sure that, again, we have good neighbor agreements that ensure that certain things are going to happen, that folks are protected, that, you know, the police responding, Solid Waste is responding, neighbors are reporting if there's an issue, the providers are doing their part to make sure that there are no issues. I mean, we need that good neighbor agreement. But on the other end, where we know that there's the potential for camping issues, and regardless of the sheltering, I mean, these issues have happened around CAT in the past, why not just simply be prepared and make it clear that that's not acceptable? We have a neighborhood there that, as of this morning, not one single individual experiencing homelessness was identified, not a single one. And so if we think it's going to be utopia, which I've heard the administration kind of say, there's going to be no issues whatsoever, then there should be no fear in the allowance of enforcement, because we'll never need to enforce.
And I'll just add that I think we're in the process right now of updating a holistic idea of encampment, sit and lie, safe camping, homelessness rights. And I think that this would be better as part of that whole conversation. I know on Thursday, we're going to have a study session dedicated to it. So it seems to me like it would make a lot of sense to have this as a holistic conversation.
Next ordinance is 36557, creating the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability Board. And we have Adam McDaniel and Kelly Thomas listed. And is Adam still online?
I am. Yep. This ordinance would just create the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability Board, and it was previously briefed by Kelly Thomas at PIES back in mid-July. In the first, you know, the first item or task on the relief list will be serving as the Climate Policy Advisory Committee for the climate portion of the company's plan. Any questions on that one?
Nope, I don't see any questions. So Adam, you are down for the next two as well. 36558, repealing inactive funds, and 36559 relating to the SERs Retirement Board membership.
The first one is, that ordinance is just part of our code cleanup process, just to remove inactive funds from the municipal code. We previously briefed that on finance on July 22nd. The SERs Board Competition Ordinance, that was also briefed on the 22nd, it updates the membership of the SERs Board, taking it from seven members to nine members. It adds the mayor or the mayor's designee an additional city employee position, and it codifies the city council members' position on the board as well. Any questions on that, of those two?
Nope, no questions. Thank you, Adam. Ordinance 36560 will be under hearing item 2B. There are no special considerations. So now we're under hearing items. H1. You can take H2 because Steve's on his way. Okay, okay. So go ahead, Eldon, you knew what was coming up. H2, vacation of the alleyway on Lee and Stone, and the first reading ordinance.
If you could pull up that map there, Jacoby, on that one. That's the other one. Here we go. And we originally talked about this vacation internally back in 2022. At that time, we had one property owner. It's the third lot from Springfield on the east side of the alley as you go north. That third lot up on there is adamantly against this vacation. I've talked to the individual. He just does not want anything to do with it. He just wants things to be left alone. But the applicants were pretty much the rest of the people along there, except for the two lots right against Broadway on the east side, a person named Mr. Olson on there. The applicants have never been able to contact that individual that owns those two lots. So we have no idea for sure where they stand on it. They did not sign the petition. We did get a petition that covered 78%, and they only need 66.23% to actually move forward to have a hearing. And usually what we try to do is make sure that we have some type of input from the adjoining property owners, even if you're against it, just so we have an idea of, is there something we can resolve? I did talk to Mr. Quong, who's the one that owns the lot, three lots up from Springfield. He just adamantly does not want this vacation. He just wants the alley to be left alone and stay like it is, and he's just not for it. And he's likely to be here to testify on it tonight. But there again, the applicants do have a right to have a hearing. So from a city perspective to it, we did look at it from a city staff point. The alley doesn't make sense to actually be vacated. It dead ends there at Springfield, as you can kind of see on both sides. There aren't no city utilities in it. And so there are three other utility purveyors, Lumen, Comcast, and the Vista, who would want to retain easements if it is vacated. But we did have, like I say, one gentleman that just does not want it. And in my mind, if it was vacated by the council, we should make sure that there's an easement retained for that individual, at least back to Springfield, a private easement, so he has the right to get in and out of that alley on there. And there again, the people that are actually trying to vacate it likely could look at trying to gate it at both ends. And anybody that needs access would have to be provided access to it, such as the utility purveyors and any adjoining property owner. But anyway, those are kind of the situation that we have. The conditions that we did have, if it was vacated by council, would be we retain easements for CenturyLink, Comcast, and the Vista. We would try to retain a private easement for Mr. Quong on there, just to make sure if he's adamantly against it, that he does have the right to be able to get to that property using that alley. More than likely, it would be from Springfield. That's where he's closest to. And we'd also, they would have to do closure work, excuse me, of the alley, which means that you put a driveway drop typically across Springfield where it's improved on there, just to signify that this alley has been vacated. Then the applicants would have to pay $17,000, which is the cost of the actual alley, the unimproved land value. So those would be the conditions if it was vacated. I just thought I would try to give you as much input as I have. I tried to talk to everybody last week about this, and that's the circumstances. I know it at this point in time. So be happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Are Mr. Quan's properties businesses? Is he worrying about customers getting into his parking lots?
Nope, it's just a house on there, and I think he rents that house out on there. He just flat out just wants to be left alone, was my understanding. And he'll probably be here to testify to that effect, or somebody on his behalf. But that's the circumstances I know it. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Going back to H1, final reading ordinance 36548 relating to the settlement of sales and use tax deferral program. Steve McDonald will brief this item.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I can give a high level and then maybe answer any questions you have. But this is similar to the parking for people sales tax incentive, I'd say, basically. So parking to people, of course, gives a sales tax benefit or deferral, and then eventually a waiver for projects that create housing, as long as it has a certain amount of low-income, under-market rate housing. This is similar, but for office buildings that are underutilized, vacant, or nonperforming, and kind of a similar program of which we're going to have a continuing number of buildings becoming vacant or less occupied, as all downtowns are kind of facing now with less people coming into downtown areas for offices, leases not being renewed, or if they're being renewed, they're often being renewed for fewer spaces. So this one kind of fits hand in glove with the existing parking of people. And in addition, developers can utilize the multifamily tax exemption as well, since they are providing some number of low-income housing for both these programs. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Item H3A through E regarding amendments and orders to the SMC, updating the associated with the South Logan Transit Oriented Development Plan. And Spencer?
I think Koby's going to bring up some slides here. All right. We presented on this a few times, so I'm going to run through these pretty quickly, and then if there are questions, we can take them. See if I'm doing this the right way. Is it working?
Try it.
Well, we'll see. So this is, the purposes of the plan really centers around transit-oriented development. The impetus for the proposals in front of you were related to the construction of the City Line, Bus Rapid Transit Line, and we identified three stations in the South Logan neighborhood that would be the focus of these planning efforts. So it's, this whole proposal is sort of an outgrowth of the TOD planning that we've done in that area. Let's see. Was that me, or was that you? All right, I'm just going to tell you when to do it. The plan itself was adopted by resolution in January of this year, so we are now in the implementation phase of the plan. I think you can click the next slide, and it has a thing about that. So we're now implementing aspects of the plan that were adopted through that resolution in January. There's three parts to the plan that we are implementing now, and then there's some remaining aspects of the plan that will be happening later on. So the first is the planned action ordinance, and then there's some kind of citywide development code update changes that we're proposing, and the last is the Hamilton Form-Based Code. You can go to the next slide. The nature of these changes, a couple of them apply in a limited area around, within the plan area. But because the zoning code itself applies across the city, some of these changes are actually proposed to the zoning code as a whole to implement the aspects of the plan that were developed specific to the Hamilton or to the South Logan area. But they would also apply to the city as a whole. You can go to the next slide. We did a lot of engagement here. This is just a quick list. You can go to the next slide. So the two area-specific text amendments are the planned action ordinance and then adjustments to the Hamilton Form-Based Code. Next slide. Next slide. A planned action ordinance allows us to do environmental analysis, essentially the CEPO work related to development on the front end as part of our planning process, so that when a private application comes in for a new development, that environmental work has already been done, and that's one less stop, one fewer stop on the, on the way towards getting a project done, because we've already done the environmental work for them. So that's one significant aspect of this planning work. And by adopting the ordinance, this would be implementing the environmental impact statement that was developed as part of the planning work. Next slide, next slide. The Hamilton Form-Based Code, so the area, some of the area within the, the planning work that was done is governed by a Form-Based Code. You can go to the next slide. The proposals there are really to streamline the various aspects of the Form-Based Code. There were, or currently there are several different what are called context areas. And as we interacted with developers and as part of the planning process, it was identified that streamlining that by, by putting it all together into one single Form-Based Code would make it a lot easier for people to use and would make it more effective as development comes in. So that's the, the Form-Based Code aspect. You can go to the next slide, and next one after this, and then after this. So these are, now we're getting into the citywide changes. So this would be a citywide change to increase the height limits in the zones listed here on the screen. These are for the multifamily, high-density residential zones, and then for center and corridor zones as well. corridor zones as well. Again, this is to implement the vision that was identified in the South Logan proposal, but we identified that this would really need to happen on a citywide scale. So the change would increase the height limits, as you can see in the table there. And again, I think we've presented on this, so I'm not going to dwell on it for too long. Another one is adjusting the height transition requirements. So in our current code, we do require that a development next to a lower-density R1 or R2 zone, there needs to be a transition from the height of that lower-density zone up to what's allowed in the adjacent zone. The current transition occurs at a 1 to 2 ratio, so that's sort of a flatter line. And what we're proposing is a 2 to 1 ratio, which would allow you to get higher faster, essentially. Go to the next slide. And next one. The center and corridor proposals are, again, rooted in the South Logan plan, but would make changes across the city. We also took into account some changes that are under consideration or will be under consideration as part of a center and corridor study that we are essentially in the final stages of. So we took the opportunity to incorporate elements of that centers and corridors study into this proposal as well. Next slide. The first is to get rid of the maximum floor area ratio requirements. This was done as, within the interim zoning ordinance that expired, I think in June. And so we've had a gap now where floor area ratio has come back. Now we're proposing to take it off permanently. So the floor area ratio is really a limit on the bulk of a building, but we already have height limits, and we have other controls that are, that apply on a site. And so it was decided that floor area ratio was duplicating work that's already being done by other aspects of the code. Next slide. The other big one is parking. In the South Logan plan, the proposal was to eliminate parking requirements in the plan area, which encompassed some center and corridor areas, but also went to the entire plan area. That was the recommendation from Plan Commission, and ultimately part of the resolution that was adopted by council. So the Plan Commission proposal was to eliminate parking requirements in all center and corridor zones. Again, because the zoning code applies across the city, it was, made more sense to just do that as a citywide change. Next slide. I'll just remind you that council amended the proposal to remove parking minimums for all uses within the city, across the city. There had been previous work under the BOH where the parking requirements had been removed for residential uses already. So the proposal from Plan Commission was to extend that to centers and corridors, and the amendment from council would just extend that across all of the city. Next slide. The other piece of the center and corridor, and again, this is coming from the South Logan work that identified drive-throughs as a particular point of concern and was embedded into the form-based code that applied within the South Logan area. That centers and corridors study looked at drive-through uses across all the centers and corridors, and we've incorporated that proposal in here. That would make drive-throughs an unpermitted use in the CC1 zone, but would still allow them to be operated on CC2 and CC3 zones, except on designated pedestrian streets. So that's pretty similar to the current proposal, or the current code related to drive-throughs, with the one change being not allowing them in the CC1 zone. We already don't allow them on pedestrian streets, so that change is not significant. Next slide. And then the last is some changes to our RMF and RHD zones. These are our higher-density residential zones, particularly to make some changes to the way open space requirements apply. Next slide. We're changing some language and just some general cleanups. And then I think the next slide has the actual space proposals. You can hit the next slide. So in our pre-BOKA requirements, we required a specific number, and it was fixed based on the number of units and didn't differentiate for different unit types. As part of BOKA, we made some changes that increased the amount of open space that was required in certain conditions. We heard that that was creating some challenges, and so we're charting out a middle ground here where we go back to some of our pre-BOKA requirements. But for larger unit sizes, we would increase gently those requirements. And this is just recognizing that different unit types are probably serving different demographics that may have different needs for open space. Next slide. There's one other part here, and that is that we are introducing a significant reduction in the open space requirements for development that occurs near a public park. So recognizing that a public park can provide those open space needs, there was less need for those open spaces in the development itself. And that proposal is within 800 feet of a park. No more than 36 square feet would be required per unit. Next slide. The Plan Commission recommendation was adopted on June 26, and that was forwarded to council. So this is your opportunity to consider their proposal or their recommendation. And I think the last slide is there. So thank you. I'm happy to answer questions. This was just sort of a refresher. We've been presenting on this several times, so I apologize if this is repetitive.
Any questions for Spencer?
All right, thanks. I think we're very excited to get this across the finish line after, how long has it been since the beginning?
I think we've been going for at least a year on South Logan.
It feels longer. It feels like when I started on council.
Yeah, it's quite a while.
Yeah.
I hear my name was also invoked during committee. So from one fellow badger to another, thanks, Eric.
And that completes the agenda for April 12th, August 12th.
All right. Do we need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed? No? All right, we still got one more week to do.
August 19th?
August 19th, and then there's also executive session, too.
On the consent agenda, item number one, there's been a request to defer this for final action on August 26.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
The motion is to defer to Aug., what day?
26th.
26th, to August 26th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. And that's deferred to August 26th.
Item number two is ARPA Childcare Program Grant Agreement Amendment, and Michelle Murray will brief this item.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. I'm here just to present basically some housekeeping items with some, from three ARPA contracts. The first one is the community-minded enterprising contract that we're doing as we're de-obligating $275,000 that was discussed during the ARPA dot exercise and all that to add to the 225 that you guys allocated. So there's a total of 500 for that bucket of funds. And in addition to that, we're moving budget of $205,980 from the employee hiring retention bonuses to childcare subsidy, and then they're also moving $20,000 from personnel to childcare subsidy. So that's going to give more childcare subsidy out into the community. Just let me move on. Number three?
Yes, number three and four are both yours, so.
Okay, perfect. Number three is a contract with Inovia Foundation. Basically, we had a five-year contract with them for $5 million for their higher education. And we had them limited to only spending 1.1 million per year, and then they could only carry over 10% of what they did not spend in the current year. We are lifting those restrictions to give them more mobility to contract the money out and spend it out so that they can manage their process a lot more efficiently, along with the money that they've got coming from other sources. It was becoming to be too administratively burdensome. So we're just changing the terms, removing those restrictions, and moving them from a monthly payment to a quarterly payment.
On that, so when it's quarterly, are they still, is it still a reimbursement model?
Yes.
Okay.
So they were, their contract says that they were supposed to be sending bills monthly. That's not been happening. So they're sending them maybe two months at a time, but now they're like four or five months behind. So we're trying to get them in an area where they can manage it, and they can get back on track and do it quarterly.
Okay.
So that we know how much they're spending, and we can manage our end of it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Michelle, I had a question on that. Does that, this amendment account for allowing them to make capital purchases such as vehicles? I know we talked about that previously.
It did not make it in there.
Could it be amended to be in there, or does that need to be a separate?
I'd have to go through the whole nother process.
Right, it doesn't need to be a separate process.
But we can work on that. That might be just a simple line item budget move. Then number three is Numerica Credit Union. They are high and popular with their down payment assistance, and so they're taking, what they would like to do is take $126,000 that was budgeted for their administrative costs, and they would like to move that into direct client assistance. And then they would also like to move another $10,000 from supplies to direct client assistance. So that'll be $136,000 going out more for down payment assistance in the city.
I would just love to hear from Numerica just more details about the program. I don't know if there, anybody could be here next week, but it would be great to just get some more specifics, because I don't think we've really gotten a lot of specifics yet.
Sure, absolutely. Lars would love to.
Perfect.
That's it?
Okay, thank you. Number five is professional service contract with Washington State Healthcare Authority, and Ariel Anderson will brief this item.
Good afternoon. This is in regards to the funding coming from the healthcare authority to contract with CHAZ for $1,000,900, of which would go directly to CHAZ. $100,000 would be kept back for the administration of that contract with CHHS. As we heard earlier today from Shelby with CHAZ, it's going to allow them to do a couple of things. One, hire some new positions for that team that currently goes out. But then in addition to that, it would expand the hours. So moving into weekends and then allowing them to also do some evening shifts as well. So any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I will handle number six, which is increased funding for outside special counsel at Summit Law Group. This is the contract that handles the labor negotiations and human services, human resources advice. So we'll be entering to continue collective bargaining with, I think, two unions this year, Local 29 and Sappho. Definitely those two. And I would add to that, we also have our inside, in our own department, Lauren Beadie, who has been working on HR issues, and she'll be working on these negotiations with most likely Mr. John Henry. Number seven is the third and final contract amendment extension with Archbright and interim HR Director Mike Ornsby.
Thank you, Mike, and members of the council. I'm back for the item that we briefed at this afternoon's meeting. This is again to provide services to the Spokane Fire Department and to Human Resources on human resource issues for five months, ending at the end of January of 2025. And we would recommend positive consideration and approval next week. Any questions that arose between this afternoon's meeting and now, I'd be happy to answer. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Number eight is the placeholder for the report of the mayor for pending claims. And number nine is the placeholder for the council meeting minutes. On the legislative agenda, there's no special budget ordinances, emergency ordinances, or resolutions. So on the final reading, and some of these we've already addressed, I think we've done all of them. I'd like to hear that. Yes. So that completes that agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda for August 19?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the advanced agenda is adopted, and now we're going to go to executive session for.
Pending litigation for 20 minutes.
Purposes of pending litigation for 20 minutes, and it'll be us plus legal counsel. Is that it? All right? Is that it? All right.
Spokane City Council is extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:56 PM. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session two additional minutes until 4:56 PM. All righty, council will be recessed until 6 o'clock tonight. Thanks.